It's time to end it.
Yes, we have to.
I haven't had it either. As we get started tonight, I want you to know I appreciate you being here and I appreciate our council being here, zoning board, and all the folks who are interested in coming to these meetings. It's been a long process. It's finally winding down, and I just want to say thank you today, Cog, for all the data. They've put hundreds of hours in this, and I appreciate that. As we get closer to being done, it'd be something I think that we live with. But I'm going to pass this around. We really don't know who's here, so, boy, if you haven't signed it, sign it, pass it on down. And then, but I'm going to turn it over to Nathan. And after that, if he wants to have questions or answers, we'll tackle that at that time. Nathan, as always, I'm going to turn it over to you. Let you go ahead.
Thank you, Nathan. Thank you, man. Once again, I thank everyone for being here this evening, and this is the third and final to this point public workshop that we have planned. After tonight, hopefully, we will address at least the broad strokes of what zoning ordinance recommendations are going to be, and then we'll turn it over to the planning commission to refine the mapping ordinance with their recommendations. We'll package that up and we'll forward it on to the council as a formal recommendation. We will have yet another public hearing at that time so that we can discuss any changes that they made. This is the third free public workshops that we were planning. This one is more or less to just present the maps and the ordinance text if there are any questions about those, and to just go ahead and review what it is that we've done over the past six weeks, and to talk a little bit about the changes that have incorporated into the text of the ordinance and onto the map that you see up here. First couple workshops, we spent a good deal of time, well, I guess I should back up. In case there's anyone who has not been introduced to me yet, most of you have stuck with it, surely know who I am by now. My name is Nathan Willingham. I'm with North West Alabama Council Local Governments, and I'm the Director of Planning and Transportation there. Our agency serves five counties and 32 municipalities included. We're privileged to also work for the City of Hamilton in our service area. At the first workshop, we talked about the origins of zoning. We talked about the need for cities to regulate growth and development as urbanization picked up, as density patterns changed as we move from the grain to a more industrial and urban society. We talked about some of the bad conditions that prompted the adaptation of zoning for use in urban areas. Standard zoning legislation was produced to sort of guide states in the adoption of their enabling legislations, which permits cities to practice zoning as an extension of their police powers. We talked about the uses of zoning to guide, the purposes of zoning to guide the use of property and the design of parcels of land. Basically, zoning is divided into two types of activities that it can regulate. One is the activity that takes place on the property, which is a use regulation, and then the other is the design of the property, how a structure relates to other structures inside of a certain neighborhood. We talked a good deal at the last meeting about the concept of neighborhood design and its importance to the zoning process and its importance to stabilizing community growth patterns and community development. We also talked about some of the common concerns that people have when we discuss zoning ordinances, chief among them being their right to use the property, and of course, the impacts that other uses have on their properties as well. We talked about the need to have a zoning ordinance that is tailored to meet the needs of the City of Hamilton, and that is not something that is exclusionary or that creates a cookie cutter development pattern. Some of the specific issues that we discussed with respect to the City of Hamilton were a number of provisions in the ordinance that were cumbersome and/or unused, dealing with repetitive flood point issues, airport zoning that never found its way onto the map, repetitive professional districts, those sorts of things. Specific things that we wanted to address as part of the revision of the zoning ordinance text dealt with the lack of agricultural zoning district in Hamilton. There's a large area that's mostly open space, forested, or agrarian, agricultural in nature that surrounds the core development along the corridors and the neighborhoods in the heart of downtown Hamilton. And several times over the past four or five years, we've been asked about what uses were permitted and agricultural uses were permitted in those areas. And there are one zoning district that was in place before, really didn't have any provisions to address those. It was a bit too restrictive for more rural residential area like you find in much of Hamilton. Naturally, we've had many conversations about the appropriate location of manufactured housing and about what the proper rules are for nonconforming uses, both in general as well as specifically dealing with manufactured homes. So what we've done as part of this process, if we try to keep it dialogue open every couple of weeks to talk about what the concerns were, what the issues were with the City of Hamilton, and then we've gone parcel by parcel and attempted to identify exactly what is taking place, what use is taking place on those properties, existing uses throughout the city, and then to sort of screen those for conflicts where they exist with the current zoning ordinance. Most of those conflicts, again, dealt with agricultural uses or dealt with manufactured housing. And we've put together a set of recommendations, we discussed these at our last meeting, that identify the areas with the greatest level of conflict, which were in the existing R-1 districts by and large, and attempt to treat those at appropriate scale. And when we're talking about scale, we've been talking a good bit about neighborhood scale, which is a location that has similar land uses, and all of the uses within that area are seemingly compatible with one another. So the recommendations that we put together for the council or for the planning commission to review before submitting to the council address the zoning districts on one hand and the nonconforming status of property on the other. The major recommendations that we made within the zoning districts were to revise the R-1 district, which was previously just for single-family residences on individual lots. Our recommendation has been to broaden that district into an R-1 agricultural and rural district, which would permit agricultural uses, single-family residences on individual lots, as well as manufactured housing. In recommending the placement of that on this map, we referred back to our existing land use, and we tried to identify the areas that warranted single-family protections because they were primarily single-family in character. Those neighborhoods were already mostly single-family. There's a couple areas within these proposed districts that are single-family, zoned for single-family uses that we do recognize there are existing nonconforming manufactured houses in those areas. And so I'll speak to later what we're doing to address those. So the first recommendation as far as zoning districts was to broaden the R-1 to allow for agricultural as well as manufactured housing, and then, of course, to locate that district on the map. The second recommendation was to create an R-2 district that provided single-family protections for those neighborhoods that were already predominantly single-family in nature. And so when you look on the map, the areas in the yellow that's designated as R-2 are areas that the existing land use show by and large are already single-family homes on individual lots, sorry residential neighborhoods. The R-3 district, we've recommended to remain unchanged. It allows for duplexes and apartments as well as single-family homes. We've tried to identify as many areas that are already in multiple family uses, either apartments or duplexes, that are existing in that form, and to designate those as R-3. So in placing the R-3 district, we wished to create or recommend that existing apartments and duplexes be granted conforming status. Then within the business and industrial districts, the major change there was the elimination of the neighborhood business and professional business districts. As part of our recommendation, we're saying that there are generally two characters of commercial development in Hamilton. If you drive around and you look at what constitutes a typical commercial development, you've got your downtown district, which is one type. It's a very distinctive development pattern. When you're there, you recognize that it is a traditional or a traditional business district. It's a traditional downtown pattern and design, and that's something that you want to lock in place going forward. And then generally outside of that, where areas are zoned for businesses or have developed as businesses, that has a very highway or auto-oriented look to it. It's a general commercial business district outside of the downtown area. And then finally, the industrial districts, we've not recommended any changes for those. You still have M1 light industrial and M2 heavy industrial that reflect different impacts as far as spoke stacks and heavy traffic and things of that nature. And then the final area of recommendations that we wanted to address in the draft dealt with nonconforming uses, sometimes called grandfather uses. A nonconforming use is an existing use of property that would not be permitted under those regulations. So say there's no ordinance in place, and I have a business in a district that winds up being zoned residential. I have a vested interest in that property and being able to continue the use of that business without it being shut down by the city or without losing my property right to use that parcel for that particular business that I've already invested in. That's nonconforming use, often called grandfather use. In the ordinance that we have in place right now, if the use is abandoned for 12 months, that owner would be unable to reestablish there. In addition, if the structure was lost through a fire or some other reason, they would not be able to reestablish a nonconforming structure in that location. That's caused problems in the past, particularly as it deals with manufactured homes, but also potentially with existing businesses that may or may not be conforming. So after the recommendations that we're putting forward to the planning commission, if they were adopted, if a use is abandoned for 12 months, it can't be reestablished. So somebody, somebody through the destruction of a use or through voluntarily pulling out just leaves it for 12 months, they don't make a reasonable attempt to reestablish that nonconforming use within 12 months and provide some evidence that they're good faith continuing to try to, try to get back what was there before. If a period of 12 months lapses, then it loses that nonconforming status and has to be built in conformity with the district that it's in. However, if a structure is lost, so the use restrictions for nonconformity are first with the same. However, if a structure was lost under the existing ordinance, you couldn't build it back unless you also put in a conforming use. Under the regulations that we're recommending to the city, to the planning commission now, you can reestablish that use if you reestablish it within 12 months and also make every attempt to meet your current building setbacks in that district. So it's a much less restrictive nonconforming status for property owners who might want to move out of a structure and move another structure back in, or who might suffer a total loss of the structure and want to reestablish. So if you can make the setbacks within a year, you can reestablish. And this also applies to manufactured homes. Before, what had happened often was a home couldn't be moved out and moved back in, so the standard was one that a property owner didn't have a lot of incentive to invest in improving that property because if they moved it out, they'd lose their nonconforming status and they wouldn't be able to put it back in. So over time, there's not as much incentive to move one out, improve the property, and move one back in. So in the new ordinance, the way that it's structured because of the nonconforming provisions for structures that we just talked about, if an owner wants to pull a manufactured home out, if they can meet the setbacks bringing it back in within 12 months, they will retain their nonconforming use status. Now, that's, that's a big difference than the environment that we were in for because now there is an incentive to improve that property in a shorter timeframe versus what happened in the, in the past under the existing ordinance. There was no incentive to improve that property until it just fell apart. So the way your ordinance is written, as long as the home is, meets certain age restrictions, you can move it back in. And of course, we can't regulate every aspect of the home, but that is generally an improvement thought to be encouraging improvement in properties in these neighborhoods that have nonconforming manufactured homes. So we thought that that was an important step. Now, we also talked a great deal about what the zoning process is, about the roles of the planning commission, the city council, the building inspector, the zoning compliance officer, and so forth. Won't bore you with any of those technical details unless you have a specific question about that. But mainly, our purpose here tonight is to be able to present the maps and discuss any concerns that you've got about the text of the ordinance. So more or less, we're just here to have an open discussion in an open house where you're welcome, after we finished sort of our open Q and A here, to come up afterward and talk with me about specifics of the map.
I wanted to, what we talked about earlier, in general, can you tell me, this is the revised map from 1, day of 9/5. It was, the draft was on 8/30. Can you tell me some general areas where you've changed since the last draft on the 30th because some people have already been looking at the map and there's been changes since then?
Yeah, we, we have made changes to the boundary, which I'll address, I'm sure it will be questioned about, as well as a couple of properties we were asked to take a closer look at, what the existing use was and what the proposed use was. But those were all here in the fringe areas or internal, there were a couple in this area. With respect to the boundary, the existing zoning map uses the 2000 census boundary for the City of Hamilton. That's not the only boundary that's out there floating around as far as information about where the administrative boundary or the official boundary of the city is. That's not a condition that you need to the City of Hamilton. The census has at least three different boundaries for the city, 1990, 2000, and 2010. The 2000 boundary is the one that was in place at the time that the original zoning map was adopted, so it's the one that we've got on the maps that are here this evening. In addition to three different census files that show the area, there is information that is recorded at the probate office, and there's also information that has been picked up by the revenue commission, and there's the minutes of the city council. All of those are potential sources of city limits boundaries. And we recognize that a map is a visual depiction based on the best available data that we've got. A map establishes an administrative boundary that is the best that we can do with the information that we've got. There will be refinements to this map going forward. However, since this is the boundary that's been in place for the last five years for the city, making these text changes and retaining this boundary, we recommend because we may not have the best boundary, and it may never be a perfect city limits boundary. But if we've made improvements to the rules that we're going to enforce within that boundary, then we would recommend proceeding with the improvements that are going to ease the zoning restrictions for the vast majority of territory within the city limits, and continuing to enforce the boundary that has been enforced administratively for the past four or five years while we move forward with the research that's necessary between the probate office, the city council minutes, and the revenue commissioners office to address specific questions about what parcels are in and which parcels are not. Ms. Mayor?
Looking at that map, it appears that that's rated as R-1. Can it ever go commercial?
It can. If it is thought by the council at any point that a parcel needs to be zoned to receive commercial development, or if there's an existing business there that we missed, we need to have it zoned commercial.
Why then, when it was set up now, I'm saying the property out at the Fox Cross, there's a lot of people spending a lot of money out there right now and hoping that that'll be a commercial, big commercial property. Why was it zoned as R-1?
I have to see the property specifically. I don't, I can't, I can't point to it on the map, so I can't see it.
Okay.
Now, my, my general response to that would be because there's not an existing commercial development on those parcels. If it was an oversight and we need to have that property prepared for, prepared to receive new commercial development, we certainly need to take a look at that. We've based our zoning recommendations at this stage on the existing use of the property, not on any planned future use. Like, if there's a planned future use that we need to address through zoning change, then we certainly want to make sure that it's in our set of recommendations before we send it to the planning.
Is the property down at the other outlet on what I call Golden Bridge, after down there, is it zoned down there as commercial? Where the spec building is and all of that?
Oh, across from the spec building, yes. Those parcels that have existing commercial development. We've tried to catch all of them as zoning.
It might be more attractive to anybody that's looking at it if they thought it was already zoned for commercial out there.
Sure, and, and that's, that is something that we need to try as much as possible to capture before the council votes on this, but even if it does get adopted, there is a process in place for.
But would it cost something to get it changed up?
Under the current ordinance, there is a fee.
That's why.
And we are, we are in conversation about a reasonable grace period to make sure that we're not charging people for mistakes that we may not have incorporated in this new draft.
But the clarity and call you need right now is for people that are planning to make changes and we may not know about it, to go ahead and let you know now.
Yeah, absolutely, and then we'll, we'll note those, and the planning commission can review them and review the map and tell us what those are. And of course, comments from the public are welcome about areas that you know specifically where you either own the parcel or you know that it's, it's going to commercialize. I don't know everything about the planned future of all the parcels in Hamilton, so really, we just went back to the base land use that was out there.
This is, this is going to be an off-ramp for I-42. As soon as it comes to the board, we're going to naturally look at it.
Yeah, and so if, if there are, when we finish up here this evening, when we turn it over into the more of an open house, let me know, and we'll mark it on the map, and we'll make sure that it's changed before it comes to the land commission when it does.
So anything I have to say, we can wait till later?
Sure.
About the sugar bench community on 49 and 133 in that neighborhood, or can we open down?
I welcome either for him. Whether a small group of specialty.
My call is from, I live at 431 County Highway 49. I've been at that location about 23 years. That's going to be up 278 there. It's going to be right there where Shell Station just got voted in to a city limit. Back multiple years ago, when they came through with the city limits out through there, they did not have the Shell Station, which it was called the Texaco Station at that time. And Don's Place was a store that was opening on the right hand side at the BP Station. That station was in the city limits at that given moment, okay? And I think this council here has just voted in, in the last, well, since they've been in office, the Shell Station in the city limits, which back many years ago, you go back on records and check it, they, Mr. Moore out of Winfield or wherever he's from, he voted not to have his store in the city limits at that time. So the city limits went around his store and went the entire distance out 278 to Mr. Delmon Payne's residence. It also, back then, it had turned left and went up 49 on the left-hand side all the way up to James Logan's Chicken House. We have a city limit sign there. By looking at the map, I'm in the county. I've been, I've been voting as a city resident for the last 20-plus years. I've been paying taxes for the last 20-plus years for the City of Hamilton. Why has it changed?
What we're doing now is we're looking for records that validate those annexations. We're looking for records in the minutes and in the probate judge's office that show us that those annexations occurred because there's a lot of tradition and a lot of history that we all know has occurred. Those parcels are probably shown on the property assessor's data because at some point there was a record that the city intended to annex it, and that was recorded in the probate office. So what we're trying to do now is to incorporate those in and out with the best data that we've got into this boundary. As to why it's not shown on there, there are a number of explanations for it. The easiest to, to explain is that in 1990, thereabout, the census got into the mapping program, and they started asking every year for cities to draw their maps, and cities were then, they were drawing their maps based on maps that were provided by the census that did not have an accurate scale on them. So a lot of areas are disproportionate, and a lot of areas aren't shown because it's based on a local update of that boundary every 10 years. And if you look at 1990, 2000, and 2010, there's a great deal of area on the 2010 boundary for this map. Much larger amount of, of territory on the 2010 boundary that is shown as in, that there's no record of it having been brought in than there is that is showing in, for example, on the property, the tax assessor's records, because there were several folks here I know that have said, well, we've been incorporating them in the tax rolls, or we're not, or in some cases voted, we're not incorporated on the boundary.
You ever come, well, we got the, the city water. When the city water came out through there, see, we had a city grant, and they paid pretty much for all that, that water workshop through there. We all came to the city council then. It was quite a few from the neighborhood, and we all thought the left-hand side was in the city limits as you go out through there. As you go out through there, on the right-hand side is in the county. We have two garbage trucks that runs out there. We have local law enforcement that runs out through there. To the left-hand side of 133, as they turn beside my house and go out through, you know, all the city, they run out through there. I was just wondering, you know, why now that we're in the county? That's, you know, that's pretty much it. I don't have no other answers.
I'll say, I'll say you're not in the zoning boundary. I don't, I can't say whether you're in the county or not. This is the boundary that has been adopted for the zoning ordinance. I can't say whether you're in the county or not. And we'll take some more specific research and try to find those ordinances that you, that you brought up earlier that would have brought in that left side of the street, that would have brought in those property owners by annexation.
Yeah, my call is from, you know, like I said earlier, for the last 20-plus years, been to plan cities, I've been voted in the cities, you know. They took my money, they took my vote. So, you know, that's what I have on that.
When was your annexation?
Man, I don't know. I've worked for this.
Well, that out there.
I had the same answer.
The Wade, Francis, and I was on the council when all that pocket law come in, all that out in there is supposed to be in.
Yeah, and if there was intent to, to annex.
I don't know, and then, got to thinking about it, I don't know if it was at the time that our city clerk at that time became ill, and we had to change. She passed away, and I don't know if it didn't get, but everybody out there, across the river out there, was took, was took in. And if last week or the week before last on your map, it wouldn't color it in, but, but I've had people call me and tell me they hadn't been paying tax.
There's a cluster of parcels up here in that area that are not connected to any other part of the city limits, but in the tax assessor's data. They're not contiguous to the city limits, and that's one of the requirements of annexation is that it be annexed so that it's contiguous to the city. So we just need to see what the, what the ordinance itself intended to do and see what was supposed to be brought in at that time. And we'll go back and see what we find in probate council.
For the sake of clarity, I don't have a sense of doing something, but you say that at some point in time in some of the maps that somebody just took a piss on across the boundary?
In every community across the United States. Nathan, where you got the issue? I think the gentleman in the back corner was.
I live in the Bronx, I'm living in the Chandler Street. I talked to the developer, Mr. Lawson, back at the city. He told me that they needed Candlelight Lane to the city, and about less than a month ago, the city had another tarred slag that wrote. But according to that, we're not even close. So I think it's just a case of, like Tim said, I think it's just a case of a miscommunication somewhere.
I'm sure it is. I'm sure that's.
The city has the city road you're going, the city street.
Sure, if, if the council had an intent to take in the property, which there's some people that are on council here tonight, that were on council at that time, are saying that they did intend to take it in, there's going to be some record of it. And if we can find that record, then it shouldn't be terribly controversial to show those parcels that were, that are recorded that have some record of an intent to annex, showing them as inside the city limits. Sorry to cut you off, Brendan.
Go ahead. I've got that somewhere. Go ahead.
Okay.
I'll hide it. If you said, if I read it correctly, in the paper sometime back, that you thought it was maybe a mistake with not having some, some of the property zoned as farming, and yet I don't see anything zoned specifically farming. What's the purpose?
The, the R-1 district is.
No, it includes, includes at this point.
It includes. It is not zoned specifically for. It permits agriculture in that area, and it is, it is. And it is described as an agricultural, rural agricultural district with the intent of encouraging rural agriculture and single-family dwellings. So it's not specifically reserved for agriculture, but it permits agriculture as well as other Anybody else? Well, if there are those that have questions, if you're comfortable coming up and asking them or you want to get back with us, the next planning commission meeting is going to be the fourth Monday. Is that correct?
The last Monday in this month.
Last Monday in this month. Pardon me for a second, that's the 30th.
Yeah, we changed that, we have a question.
That's correct, I forgot about that. So the next planning commission meeting will be on the 30th, and I'm sure there'll be plenty of conversation about this in between and leading up to that. So I'm sure that the mayor will be happy to hear your concerns. I don't want to volunteer anyone else. I, of course, will be listening intently to what the city folks here, the officials here say. As I said before, I'll be glad to take your questions, if I take you a while to get to me, if there's a lot of folks that have some questions that want me to address. And I may not be able to answer it this evening, but I'll see as much as I can, I'll see what I can get for you as far as a response.
Because both those maps are same.
Yes, all three of them, the one outside as well as the two up front are all the same.
What is, remember, I didn't grow up here. I still sometimes get confused by that, but that northeast area, is there a general communities that are sort of being left out, names for those communities that people would know? How about Tim, you're looking blank.
That's part of the Sugar Ben area.
Sugar Ben area is pretty much sort of being left out.
No, city.
It's, yeah, being left out on the map, but should be in the city.
Part of it is along the road, you're right, but part of it is not, the northeast part is not in.
Part of the Sugar Ben, so part of the Sugar Ben is being left out.
Let me just say one thing here as we close, and afterwards, we can come talk to Nathan and look at the map. We know this is not perfect, but we're trying. That's why we've taken our time for two months to try to get a little bit better than it was. And we purposely did that, we purposely tried to get your input, and I think it's going to be a lot better. I know the ordinance is, I've looked at the ordinance, and as we work to get this map correct, I think it'd be something that we'll live with. But like I say, individually, we can come see Nathan, this is over, and we'll start doing some digging and find out specific questions. We can't vote on anything tonight anyway, but specifically, if you have a question, we'll take it down, do the research, and see if we can get it right. And once again, thank y'all for coming.
Right, also, you know, you spoke to Nate the last meeting. We're not going to be in no big hurry to get this done. We're going to make sure, try to get it as close to right as we can, if it takes a while. So, you know, we're not going to do nothing in the next two weeks.
Okay. Okay, thank y'all.